So, let's open this meeting of the Nottingham Select Board for Monday, January 27th, 2020. And before we begin, let's all rise and do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, first item of business is manifests.
I'll make a motion, we approve the accounts payable manifest of January 27th, 2020, and payroll manifest of January 28th, 2020.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Uh, any opposed? No? Were you a yes, Donna?
Yeah.
Okay. So, four, one abstention. Why'd you abstain?
I don't think I was here.
For the manifests? Not minutes?
Oh, oh, minutes, oh, my bad. I thought it was minutes.
Nope.
It was a long ride back from Arkansas.
I drove. Twenty-four hours straight.
That's tough.
Yeah.
That's some driving.
Yes, it is.
My husband did Alabama and back for twenty-four hours, but he took like four hours to sleep.
Yeah, that's the smart thing.
Did you get yours? Good. All right, next item, minutes from... Meeting minutes from last meeting, January 13th.
Yeah, December 16th.
And December 31st.
December 31st.
Oh, I don't have either of those. Oh, yeah, we deferred those from last time. Okay. All right, well, we can start with the 16th. Unless anybody has any comments or anything?
Make a motion that we approve the minutes of both December 16th and December 31st as edited.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Okay, that was unanimous. And we do have minutes from January 13th. And that was just myself, Tyler, and John that night. So... Do you got...
What?
Did you want more time to make corrections, or were you satisfied with it the way it was?
I've never been very good at grammar, really. I can read okay, but...
Okay. All right. Well, I mean, I was satisfied with it the way it was, so if you guys are happy with it, I'll take...
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes from the board meeting of January 13th, 2020. Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Two abstentions. Okay. All right, action items from last meeting, I don't believe we had anything other than minutes and two items that Chris is gonna talk to us about tonight anyways. So, uh, moving on, reports from assigned boards and committees. Budget, Ben, you weren't here, but Chris, did you, were you with the board?
Yes, Budget Committee met last Thursday with Public Works Director Sean McLean, talked through highway operations, recycling stuff, and a little bit about the related budget. This was more general introductory stuff, he hadn't been with them yet, so went fine. We were there for forty-five minutes or so. No major questions or concerns.
Okay. Were there any questions about the economics of recycling? I'd expect that to...
Yeah, we keep, we, virtually every time I'm with the Budget Committee, we bounce up against recycling somehow, whether it's the changes in plastics, or the, you know, the falling revenues, or changes in costs, it's, um, yeah, that comes up every time we talk with Budget Committee, we're talking about that subject broadly.
But nothing unexpected?
No.
Conversation-wise?
No.
Okay. Anything else on budget?
No, well, we're coming back to it.
We are, yeah, yeah.
Nothing else from the committee.
All right. Uh, Planning Board?
I wasn't at the meeting, I was out of town.
Okay. Okay. Did you email?
Yeah, I emailed.
You did? Okay. All right, CIP?
We had, we finally met, what, about a week ago, or a week and a half ago? And the CIP is updated, it's complete, and ready for publication in the Town Report.
Cool. Is that something you wanna review with us?
Um, we certainly can if that's what the board wants.
Yeah?
I mean, there's nothing, year to year, there's nothing dramatic changes in it.
Yeah.
Basically, it's just a taking of the requests from all of the departments and compiling it in one sheet. But if the board wants us to go through it, we certainly can.
I'd just like to see it before it goes final, or before you guys finish it, just because I've been on that committee for years, so...
Okay. So, do you want Chris to send it out to the board?
Yeah, that works. You guys good with that? Yeah? Okay. All right, CIP 300th?
300th meeting Thursday night.
Thursday night? Okay, Thursday it is. And Marston, anything?
Yeah, so we actually had a really good meeting this morning with folks from the NYA. And as I have mentioned in the past, that our focus is trying to do fundraising and, you know, grants, seeking grants and stuff like that. We have talked to the NYA, NYA is a 501(c)(3)C, or whatever those numbers are.
C3, yep.
Charitable organization. So, if people want to make a donation, and if they donate it to us through the NYA, then it becomes a charitable donation. So, we're having conversations with the NYA about kind of finalizing that arrangement, and then having a MOU between Marston and NYA, potentially making the Marston Committee a subcommittee of NYA. So, working through all those details, all good in terms of just us being able to raise funds and be able to accept them, and still for people who aren't donating to get that charitable deduction.
Right, right.
So, very, very good, very cooperative discussion with NYA.
And possibly becoming a part of NYA, you said? The Marston Committee?
Not a part of it, but maybe a subcommittee underneath it. So, we'll see.
Do you think that'll help with, like, organizational support?
Um, to be determined, we have to work through what the MOU is gonna look like.
Yeah. Still sounds good, though.
Oh, it's fantastic.
Yeah.
It's fantastic, and you know what? Again, I give a lot of credit to Courtney for forging a really good relationship with the NYA.
That's good, that's excellent. Okay.
I don't know, I mean, anything you wanted, Dad, for that?
No.
Okay. All right, moving on, Town Administrators' Report?
Uh, not too much in the way of news, I did wanna run through, we're in the race now, uh, leading up to Town Meeting, and I just wanted to run through the calendar with you, make sure we're all, uh, in town, and, uh...
I'll be here, I'm leaving on Sunday.
What you have, uh... Town Meeting is the 14th of March.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, don't worry, we're not there yet, but...
He's just jabbing me because one year I booked a trip to the Caribbean.
I wasn't there last year, so, you know...
He wasn't there last year.
But anyway, just so you're all, you know, we put this stuff in writing all over the place, but I wanna make sure we're all understanding where we are. Tonight is your last crack at the budget, the budget hearing, the public, uh, public hearing of the Budget Committee is a week from Thursday, so this is your last meeting before that public hearing. The filing period for Town Offices closes on the 31st, which is this Friday. That's regular business hours for the Town Clerk, and then Thursday, and then Friday, 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., extra hours by law for the filing for Town Offices. February 4th is the deadline for petition warrant articles, we've got a few, and maybe a couple more in the pipeline. The 10th, which is your next regularly scheduled meeting, two weeks from tonight, is the night before the presidential primary. That night, you will finalize the warrant, post the warrant. You'll have, uh, you'll have most of that language this week. There's not really any surprises, the petition stuff will be new to you. There's one, that asset management program I got a grant for, that's an oddball warrant article, but I think you'll find it relatively easy to stomach. We'll have to talk about the order in which we wanna tackle that stuff at the meeting, we've got, um, two, two, maybe three ballot votes by law at Town Meeting on Saturday. So, that has a way of, you know, slowing the works down, and, um, we'll have to, we'll have to think about that, and the order in which you wanna tackle things.
Don't some, don't they have to go first?
The, only the budget has to go first. And, um, so, that's your, your next, your next meeting is the 10th, two weeks from tonight. We're trying to keep that slim, 'cause it's the night before the long day of the election, you'll all be, you know, working all day, and probably starting early, you know, polls are open at 7:00 this time, so, um, we're trying to keep that clear.
Can we just talk about coverage about that tonight?
I won't be able to make that meeting on the 10th.
Okay.
I will be here all day for elections, though.
Okay.
No.
Uh, do you wanna do that right now, or do you wanna, you wanna come back to it?
Uh, what, your, whatever you want.
All right, let's come back to it. Four weeks from tonight, we'll have at least two public hearings, two of petition warrant articles, uh, by law require public hearings before you. One is the proposal to go to SB 2. The other one we just received is a, and was just certified by the Town Clerk on Friday, I think, a change in the land use change tax. Right now, land use change tax revenues go to the Conservation Fund, there's a petition warrant article to change that, to have land use change tax revenues go to the General Fund. And that also requires a public hearing. Those will be on the 14th of February. It's pretty much too late to change anything at that point, so now you're in the public education and discussion phase.
Do you mean the 24th of February?
I'm sorry, 24th, yes, yeah, four weeks from tonight.
Great, I won't be there for that either.
You're out then, too?
I'm actually going on vacation.
Good for you. Oh, that's right, you told me that.
He's on vacation that week.
Hope it's somewhere warm. The, uh, and then we're at Town Meeting. All right, so then, you meet, uh, the 9th of March, which is the night before Election Day, right? We don't have anything on the agenda at that point, but I'm sure something will come up. Probably planning for the Saturday meeting, and that kind of thing. And that is the calendar. Everybody good with that? Uh, we still do not have any feedback or decisions on the Town Report dedication. If you have any thoughts?
Have you got some town what?
Dedication.
Town Report dedication.
Oh, okay. Any recognition of any sort, you don't have to call it a dedication, but any, any individual group concept, anything, and it's gonna get recognized in the front of the book. We still don't have anything on that. We may slide a meeting with the moderator and, you know, of Town Meeting prep into one of those. Uh, but other than that, I don't have anything new on the radar. If there's anything else you wanna add, let me know. And we're in it, it's on now, so... Yep.
Okay.
And that's all I got.
So, coverage on the month?
Yep.
What's everybody planning?
I have all day, so I figured I'd just be there in the morning, and then if we need to take a break in the afternoon, then come back for the evening, or whatever, or you guys wanna handle it. And I'm flexible all day, so...
Yeah, I mean, I can't do all day, I can do in the morning, I can do like, say, 6:00 to like, 10:00, and then come back from like, 5:00 on, but I cannot do the whole day.
Yeah. I can be there whatever hours during the day, I always take the whole day off from work, so, um, I did promise to be there for opening, you know, since we were opening early, so I'll be there bright and early, and, I mean, if I need to stay the whole day, I will, so... But that'll give us some flexibility to let anyone else come and go as they need to.
I thought we were supposed to be there the entire thing.
There, no, it just has to be a quorum of us available. I don't think all five of us need to be there all day long.
There's, there's debate about whether there, we even require a quorum for this particular election.
I pencil it in all day, so...
You wanna, you've had communications about training and scheduling and stuff from the election officials, do you wanna respond to them and let them know when you'll be there?
I'm going tomorrow to...
Yeah, I'm going tomorrow at the evening one.
Yeah, I'm doing the evening one.
The training thing.
Yes.
All right, so if you wanna communicate with the election officials about when you'll be there on Election Day, they can, they can, you know, plan their work, or whatever they, you don't want me to get in the middle of it, is what I'm really asking.
Actually, you know what?
We work.
I actually can't make the training tomorrow, 'cause I'm asking for the client all day.
Yeah, you have to report to Dee, or you report to Bonnie about it.
You know what, I will, I'm gonna write it down, so you said 6:00 to 10:00?
I can do like, 6:00 to 10:00, and then I can go back.
Now, we're certified to work...
Donna, 6, A, 10, A, and then 5, B through whenever.
So, if I had to be step in and start writing these names, checking them off.
Tyler, what was your, um...
I should be available, I mean...
Throughout the day?
Throughout the day, yep.
Okay.
If I could be selfish, I'm not a morning person, I'm an evening person, so I'll be more than happy.
Well, we got enough that are gonna be there first thing in the morning, so...
Perfect.
Yeah.
I'll go from 10:00 till whenever we close, that's good, or whenever you need to leave, Donna, I'll be there.
Okay. I'll, um, I'll send this to Bonnie, and then just give, that way we don't all have to hit her up, and then, yeah. And if anything changes, just let me know, and I'll let everyone else know, so we can absorb any gaps that might, that might come in.
Doesn't sound like they'll be again.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Have we figured out, and just out of, since we're talking about this in the general scope, we put the money aside for, hey, who's in charge of that? Getting the food, buying food?
Uh, I, I told Bonnie that what you, that you had greenlighted that, and I haven't heard about it since, I assume she's working on it, I think I heard secondhand, she was trying to find somebody, but...
So, maybe somebody'll discuss with her tomorrow at the meeting, when I'm there. All right?
Yeah. You good cook?
Just get a barbecue.
I got a credit card barbecue.
Subway sells sliders now.
I make a mean piece of toast. Okay, anything else, Chris? Nope. Okay. All right, so before we go on to general business, we do have an announce, a public announcement to make. The town has been served with a lawsuit from a number of the private roads on the south side of town.
Emergency lanes.
Okay. Emergency lanes, private roads. They are seeking class action status, so there could potentially be a large number of plaintiffs in this case. The board has not discussed it together yet, since we've been served, and will be, will also be consulting with our legal counsel for, to determine how to respond to this lawsuit. There are two members of the board that live on these roads and may potentially become part of this class, should it achieve class action status, and with that, they have statements to make regarding that possibility.
I'll be recusing myself from any discussion upon this case.
So, my statement's a little wordier?
Yeah, well, I'm keeping it short and sweet, it's the proper thing to do.
You're probably smart, but I've given this a lot of thought, and what I wanna say is that throughout this process, and the many passionate discussions that we've had regarding the emergency lanes, I feel like I've worked hard, hard to remain objective, and to seek a win-win solution for both the residents who have legitimate concerns, and the town of Nottingham, which has legal obligations. I believe that we were working towards that by updating the emergency lane policy. However, with the filing of the class action suit, the petitioners are asking for all emergency lanes, including my own, to be accepted as town roads. I'm disappointed, I wish we could have achieved a win-win without getting to this point, but since we're here, my involvement in any further discussions as a Select Board member may be viewed as a conflict of interest, and I will recuse myself from any discussion related to the class action suit from this point forward. I will also not participate in any legal action against the town related to this matter. I do hope that this class action can be fully resolved as quickly as possible, and I look forward to continue to serve the town on all other matters.
Thank you. All right. That said, that's, that's that, moving on. General business, 2020 budget.
Okay, you have, uh, the last, the last draft, the only thing that has changed since the last time you saw it, in terms of numbers, is, um, related to the topic you just discussed. On line, sorry, I should have had this ahead of time. Wherever our legal services budget is, uh...
Page 3.
Line 82. In talking with counsel, assuming that we've got a big effort in our hands regarding that class action lawsuit, we've added $35,000 to the operating budget for 2020 to cover those costs. Again, the board hasn't discussed this as a group, so you may, uh, you may treat that differently as we come out of our first discussion tonight. It would probably mean an amendment somewhere else later in the process if you, but I needed to put something in there in anticipation of it, so that's, uh, that's the only substantive change. We'll continue to work on the narrative column there before, you know, as we work our way through the more public process, but the numbers are what they are. The only remaining, uh, thing that we've kind of left open and talked about is the kitchen of this building. We, uh, we don't have anything in here right now, it's been in the back of the mind since we started this process, but the total number was, you know, a little bit onerous, so we said we'd come back to that question, anything else you wanna cover tonight?
What was the kitchen, like, 30?
Uh, we can, we can, we can do it for, in...
We budgeted 18 for the kitchen.
Yeah, we did, we had 18 last year, and that's a, you know, redo the cabinet faces and the fixtures, and get rid of the island in the middle, and I think...
They do range and stuff going into?
Yeah.
So, there would be no island?
Yeah, what, what we wanna do is replace it with movable food service stuff, so we can have some flexibility in the room. 18 was a, you know, a ballpark from last year, that'll still work, we can make it work. Yeah, you could make it, you could do it for 40, if you put your mind to it, without too much difficulty, but, um, it's more of a facelift at 18, but...
This work doesn't include the floors?
Correct.
Are we just putting a Band-Aid on this?
Uh, it's, it is more, I mean, well, the, to get the sinks right, you know, it's, it's more than a Band-Aid, we'll get, we'll get new sinks and fixtures, paint the walls, I think we actually have volunteers ready to paint the walls, but, um...
Well, my concern is the floor.
The, any floor in this building is a big undertaking, given it's vintage. So, we did not, we did not think about the floor, because when you start pulling up the floor, you start exposing other things that...
So, what happens if during construction, a tile or two gets broken, and now it's exposed?
I think you can deal with that on a, on a smaller scale. You know...
Concern about the safety of the...
Yep. Okay.
I mean, personally, I would like to see it get done, I think that it's, it's almost an embarrassment, but, um, but I also wanna be...
Can we at least explore the option of what it would cost, at least get an estimate? I mean, and then make a determination?
On the floor? Yeah, we'd have to do something in the way of, I mean, we're probably looking at asbestos testing.
Right.
And remediation.
But if we do that in the kitchen, isn't that gonna open up the, to the rest of the building?
I don't know, I'll talk with the building inspector about it.
Okay.
Yeah, we hadn't considered that.
I mean, we're gonna be sinking renovation money into the, to the building, I think we should be doing it and doing it right, and not just putting a Band-Aid over a floor that could potentially bite us later, later on, and which means we're gonna be ripping out all that stuff that we had just put in there, to remediate all the asbestos.
What's your concern about the floor?
Uh, tiles get cracked, broken, exposes the asbestos, I mean, uh...
So, you're concerned about what happens while the work is being done?
Absolutely.
Oh, I see.
Because I've, I've seen it in my, in my career, that things have happened, and things, you know, they, things happen, asbestos exposure and all that stuff, and then that's a whole different ball of wax when it comes to asbestos being exposed, or personnel being exposed to asbestos. Do we know if it's in the floor?
No.
All the one reason why I think we should do it, due diligence, at least do some sort of testing in that particular room. If it's in that one, then it's throughout the building. I'm just saying, we should do it, due diligence, to ensure the safety of everyone.
So, if it becomes a bigger project, then I would wanna question whether, with everything else going on this year, if you have the cycles to do it?
It's a busy year.
Yeah, 'cause it's gonna be a busy year. USA Springs is gonna be coming to resolution, hopefully, there'll be a lot going on around that.
Yeah, we've got four elections and a revale, and yeah, it's a busy, new off, new officers, new elected officers in key positions too. It's, it's a big year.
So I'm not, you know, I don't disagree with you. I'm just wondering if we, to your point, if we can't tackle it right, do we tackle it this year?
Can we stomach leaving it that way for another year?
I think a lot of things leaving it the way it is.
Yeah, I know, I know. But yeah, to that point, doing it right instead of just Band-Aid-ing it. But there's something, like you said, if we've got volunteers willing to paint the walls, that would be an improvement without a lot of...
Well, I mean, if you're gonna, if you're gonna trash the place a year later, you don't want to waste the volunteer effort of painting the walls now and...
Yeah, yeah. What do you guys think?
I'd say leave it like it is, but I don't, to me, I don't know. What's wrong with it? There's not much wrong with it. What's going on in there? People are sitting down, talking. I mean, it's not like, we're not running, we're not in the restaurant business, just like the old town, all that kitchen, whatever, all has to come out, you know? It doesn't belong in there. So that's my feeling, but just me.
I see the concern of the asbestos, if there is asbestos, you know, just getting it tested first before we dump major money into it. I don't know how much it costs of that to do it, if it's a simple project, if it's...
Can get costly.
For testing?
Well, testing, no, but to...
Well, I mean, testing would be, answer a lot of questions for us on what we do.
It would.
If that's going to be a concern, then, you know, because I believe we, we should get it done, you know, and make it more functional and useful. It's, you know, as we let it go, everything decays a little bit more and a little bit more.
Yep.
But would we do asbestos testing in one room of the building?
Again, based on the age of this building, chances are if it's in that room, it's in all the other rooms.
Then I would prepare to deal with that.
As we renovate each room, that's something we would have to think about as we progress, but sooner or later, I mean, you look at the old gym. I mean, that, you know, it's already cracks forming and tile lifting and all that in that old gym. That, that's concerning. We, we as a board should be thinking about the safety of everybody, you know, the public, general public, the users, as well as the town employees that have to work in this building. I recall it wasn't that long ago when they wanted the new school, they wanted to condemn this building because it wasn't useful, but yet we're still using the building, and yet nothing really has changed. So if we're going to do it, let's do it right. And I would say that we do the testing to ensure that there's either asbestos or none of that. If there's no asbestos, great, move forward. So what do you say to the idea of getting it tested this year as a precursor to our plans, our planning process for that kitchen? Doing the testing and then hold off on construction? Yeah, because then we'll know what we're dealing with. That, that, that is one option, depending what the, the, if there is asbestos, that gives us an opportunity to present it to the town to, to get more money. Right, and to research our options for mitigating it, whether it's just that room or the whole building. It'll give us time to come up with a plan and come up with numbers that we can present to the town at the following town meeting. I would be in favor of that, yeah.
What I would like to propose is that we, that we postpone that till the, the second half of the year, so it's not something that we ask Chris to take off and focus on as a priority in the first half of the year.
After the elections and all that?
But let's, let's get through the first half of the year and see where we are in terms of projects and how much more the, the team can take on. So I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you, but again, I'm just concerned about the balance of the workload with everything that's coming up.
Testing wouldn't be much. Construction, yeah, that would be. What do you think of that, Chris?
Yeah, it's fine, whatever, whichever way you want to go, we can...
I'm good with holding off till the summer.
Summer or fall?
Half a year.
So revisit in July?
Yeah. How much does that kind of testing cost? Is that something that we should make a point of?
No, it's not. I don't think it's...
Short money?
No, it, it's not, not something you need to amend the budget for. We've got a maintenance line in the...
It can, it can fall under that.
Yeah, well, I mean, if, if, this is a question you may not want the answer to, but the answer's cheap.
Yeah.
Relatively.
Yeah.
Alright.
There's your peace of mind.
Yeah.
Hey, Chris, I did have one other thing on the budget, just a, under the town hall, other buildings, mostly around the electric.
Yep.
You just, you have a narrative there that says to be resigned.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna, we've just got our December invoices, so we'll, we'll put a little more meat on that. I, the last time I looked at the numbers, the numbers really weren't changing, but I will put some more meat on that, on the narrative. Yeah.
So basically what we're looking at is like a, it's a six percent overall budget increase?
Yeah, on the operating budget side, it's just under seven. That makes a lot more sense in the context of the full warrant, where we've got less in appropriations on the warrant. I think we, we beat that up pretty good a couple of weeks ago. If you, if you add all that all in together with the bigger operating budget and the smaller warrant article appropriations, we're more at like a, a two, a two and a half percent tax burden increase, not anticipating any growth in the tax base. That's, you know, we've been growing at one, one point one percent pretty consistently. We've got revale coming, so the tax burden hit will not be the seven percent number that you see on the operating budget overall, if everything's approved at town meeting. And we'll, we'll have to take pains to explain that, kind of in reverse, I think, at town meetings, so that we don't shock people with a, a big increase like that. And there, obviously, there could be more other petition things that we're not, we're not at that deadline yet, so there could be financial things that come in by petition that we, we don't anticipate yet.
Right. Chris, how much do we owe on the fire station?
Give me a few minutes. I can, I can get there.
So I'm looking at this, the payment and the interest, it's like thirty percent.
Uh, did we, are we over? Is that what you're looking at?
No, I'm just looking, I mean, the amount for interest is roughly thirty percent of the principal.
Oh, so the, the way those are structured are declining principal bonds?
Oh.
So the amount due goes down every year.
Sort of the opposite of a traditional...
Yes. And the other thing that monkeys that up is that we make extra principal payments with impact fees every summer. You just did that, so that throws the actual off every year, and we're actually paying it down faster than we would buy in the terms of the note.
Yeah.
Yep. But if I can stall a little bit longer, I can get you a better number on what we owe. It's in the CIP. I just got to find the file. Anything else you want to tweak or...
Yeah, I got one. Line two eighty-eight, recycling center equipment, the plow, the bob, let's get the Bobcat.
Yep.
I still see that as a want and not a need. We've got, as I recall our last meeting that I attended, you had mentioned that the cardboard was getting wet and so on, and they weren't going to be taking it because it was wet. We've got other issues like that to take care of first before we can get the equipment.
Uh, the, we've cut, we've taken care of the paper. We, well, we haven't bought it yet, but we've got a, we've got a plan for that, how we're going to solve that, so...
How about for the tires?
The tires, uh, we, we had a grant that wasn't big enough. We're going to go back for a larger grant this year. It's probably a, it's a two thousand dollar problem, ballpark, something like that.
That could be used for that.
Weren't we just buying a storage?
A cover for the paper dumpster? That's the thing, last thing we just discussed. Tires, we, we got a grant, but the grant wasn't big enough, so we're going to go back and ask for more this time. It's a pretty easy grant to get, so we're going to see if we can get it without paying for as much of it. Different, different pool of money, but...
But weren't we just buying a metal storage box to stick the tires in?
Conex, wasn't that for the tires?
Did we go through that already? I, I didn't think we finished that.
Cargo container.
Yeah.
I didn't think we'd finish that yet.
Because it wasn't, I didn't think those were that expensive.
No, you can get a brand new one for six grand. You can get a used one for half that.
Did we finish that? I just, um...
I know we talked about it.
Yeah, I know we've talked about it, but I didn't think we'd finished it. I, I could be mistaken.
I thought we were going to be purchasing something.
The last thing we talked about was the paper dumpster cover.
Yeah.
That was just a couple of weeks...
We talked about tire one. It's been a while since we...
Yeah, I, I'm sorry. I flushed that out of my, my working memory, but at any rate, well, I mean, the, the plow is a, you know, it helps to, it helps on the cleanups. That's the, that's the dream.
But it's also my understanding that they were going to get that other, the smaller truck, three fifty for their use. Of course, now, what's the status of that?
Yeah, it's not going to live long enough to be of much use, I don't think.
So I have a question on this plow, since I've, I, again, I don't know, I know what the machine that it's going to go on. Is this plow something that could be used later on a different vehicle, or is it just made just for this and that's it?
No, it would be just for the, just for...
Let's say down the road we found it not being useful for them. Can we reuse that plow somewhere else in town on a truck, on a truck, or anything?
No, no, it's, it's just for that piece of equipment.
Just made for the lull, or whatever you want to call it.
For the, yeah, for the little Bobcat, yep.
Well, it's actually the lull.
Yeah, and just so you know, the Bobcat's not, it's not, you know, that's the branding. That's not a skid steal like everybody thinks a Bobcat is, is what you just mentioned alone, which is that long arm.
Yeah.
For picking up pallets and...
Yeah. And I'm, and I'm not convinced that that's a need. I still believe it's a want, and we have other things there that need to be taken care of.
Well, what do we think about that?
How old is our lull?
It's leased, isn't it?
Uh, I got that. Let's see here. The, what we call the Bobcat...
It's leased. It's, we're renting the, oh, we're renting the...
No, no, we own, we own it outright.
Okay.
The forklift dates to two thousand, the Bobcat to two thousand eleven. So it's eight years old and change.
There's still twelve years left in life of that thing.
At least twelve anyway.
Take care of, yeah.
Yeah. My concern is safety as well, because there's blind spots on that.
On the plow?
No, on the Bobcat. And then you add a plow to that, it only complicates it.
I mean, I, I don't know enough about it. I have to defer to me, Chris and me, each on one.
I'm an IT guy. I don't know either way.
I'm just throwing out opinions, so I'd actually like to see what, what, you know, Sean has to say about it, if he has any problems with getting it, or, you know, do we have the people there that will be able to qualify and use it? You know, I never asked that question. I don't know. I mean, they can use it to stack the things, but I don't know how it even operates, so...
Yeah, I'd assume wait, hear from him myself. They really need it.
If Sean says they need it, then I'll take it as, I'll take it as his opinion to be correct.
Did this request come through, Sean?
Yeah, he's been, yeah, he's in touch with all this stuff. I mean, we haven't talked about it much, but yeah.
Maybe ask him, get a, get a second opinion for him on it.
Well, I mean, if it's in the budget, it means that he thinks it's valuable, right?
Yeah.
There's no need to ask him for an opinion. If it's in there, I'm assuming that he believes it's needed and, you know, able to be used, so I'm willing to defer to him.
Yeah, John and Tyler said they wanted to hear from him if, specifically about on this.
Again, I refer to what Donna said too. If he's already okay to put, to put it in here, you know, I guess we can teeter on the questions, you know, the operation, is will they be able to plow a majority of the parking lot with it? I mean, are we going to have our big truck go through this?
No, no, this is, this would be used for...
Just to clean around the dumpsters and the things like that, the smaller areas where they can't get through.
Yep.
The backside of the building or whatever.
Yeah, in those times where they, you know, they've got to get in to let the, the retrieval big trucks, when the place isn't open, they've got to get in and, you know, clean up around the dumpsters so they can pull them out and that kind of stuff. You know, timing of the storms is, is, is the tough part for them, and when, if they need to open in highways, working roads, they get, you know, a quick treatment to get them open, but there's a lot more detailed work that they'd like to be able to do with something like this. That's the main use for it.
And we've been pretty good at the recycling center when we're having storms, but they just close for the day. They don't usually stay open during a...
No, we, it, it's going to be pretty bad. There's, there's no better way to get unpopular in this town than to close the recycling center on short notice, because people fill up their trunk with smelly stuff and they don't want to bring it home again. It's, it's a, it's a last resort to close up there.
Call ahead.
Call John's house.
Don't ask online. Hear you fart online. Don't ask.
The hearing is when?
A week from Thursday.
Okay, so we don't, we do not have a meeting before the hearing?
Correct.
So we don't have an opportunity to bring Sean into a meeting?
Very true. So...
And how much is the plow? I mean, exactly how much is it? Is it the...
Twenty-five hundred?
Twenty-five hundred dollars?
Yeah, I mean, it comes down to it, it's, I mean, it's less than one of our stipends. It's pretty short money.
You know, the want versus need question, that's, that's debatable. They might think they need it.
Well, we've also short, shortchanged. We've always, as a town, been cheap in areas because something hasn't been a, a dire need, right? But we've got a public works director. We are charging him with improving efficiency, better service to the town. So if he's saying that this is something that will improve the efficiency of the operation, then I'm, I trust him.
And that's how I'll vote.
What do you think, Tyler?
If they need it, I guess they need it. I mean, I, I don't know, right? I'm hoping it's just not another thing that's going to set, you know, on the side of some building and not be used. And I believe if they do get an eight, eight-foot plow, they could do a lot more than just go around the dumpsters or whatever.
And where would they store it on the off-season?
Up some, there somewhere, or perhaps in the garage over here. I don't know. I don't, you know, we, we stuff a lot of stuff in there in the summer. It's probably be in the way on the inside anywhere up there.
So I think the only way this board can make decisions is through motions. So I think if somebody wants to reduce that...
Did we just say one, two? I said I was final, you said you're final, you're final with it, right? Everybody got objections? Well, we got one objection?
Yeah, I, I don't have an opinion either way, because again, I, but it's, it's short money. It's not going to...
money, it's not gonna break the bank, it represents point oh-oh-three percent of the budget. Not gonna.
So there it goes, stays on.
Sounds good.
Uh, to go back to the fire station, I, I think I might've said declining principal, it's a declining interest uh, loan, sorry, uh, we owe about three hundred and twenty-five thousand on it still. The principal payments are constant, the interest payments decline, not the other way around, uh, whereas your typical mortgage would be, one would go up and the other one would go down, so the payments go down over time.
Is there any opportunity to refinance that, or? Or at this point, is it not worth it?
At this point, it's, I think it's late, yeah, we, some of these, I, I looked at that question a couple of years ago, and some of these are, they're precluded from refinancing through the bond bank, I think, uh, there's a, a couple of them, we looked at, uh, I haven't looked at this question in a while, um, uh, I think we're close enough to the end that it may not pay for itself. Uh, unless you wanna spread it out even longer, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend that. Even though money's cheap, um, by the time you get done paying bond counsel and transaction fees and all that stuff, um, we may be late enough in it now. We've got seven years left after this year
Yeah.
on that, so it's, it's getting late.
Yeah. Okay.
Mulligan, Mulligan and the fire station both finished their payments at the same time, seven years from now.
Got a lot of money saved.
So Chris, I think you've done a good job putting together a conservative budget as you typically do, um, you know, I, I think it's a good budget, I think it's a solid budget, and, uh, when you combine the, um, the warrant articles offsetting the operating budget increase, I think it's a reasonable budget to be bringing. Well, thank you, from my perspective.
Well, I think it's good, too.
Any questions for Chris on the budget? Any other line item questions?
Do you need a motion or anything on this?
It would be good to, uh.
Approve the budget as amended?
Yep.
All right.
If I can go to the.
Oh, one last thing, just on the, uh.
Oh, we were almost there.
Yeah, no, we are, just a quick question. On the twenty-twenty budget, the seventy thousand dollars, the LE attorney, a town attorney, he jumped up in the years before, spending thirty-five thousand. Is that due to what could be possibly happening in the future?
Yeah, uh, we, I, I opened with that, uh.
That what you meant before, okay.
Yes, that, yes, that is, uh, and that is a guess from the, from the attorney, uh, given the pile that looks like it's growing on that case, so, yeah.
Okay, well, I will take a motion on this budget.
One more thing. Oh, okay. I'll make a motion, we, uh, pass the budget.
Approve.
Approve the budget, Chris is.
As amended?
As amended, yes.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? All right, it's unanimous. Say, one, twenty-seven. All right, next item, our impact fee request.
Uh, you keep bouncing up against the requests from the school for, uh, release of impact fees for engineering and architectural services for the school expansion. You're out of time, they need a decision so they can move forward.
So we've heard from their attorney that the request was valid. The previous request from a couple of years ago, our attorney said was valid, which is nearly identical.
Our attorney?
Yeah.
I would qualify that a bunch, but, um, you, you have feedback on the last request, which was for, uh, an enrollment study, it wasn't for capital soft costs like this is, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't call them the same. They're, this one is, in terms of what the expenses are, is probably closer to what the law has in mind than the last one was.
Yeah.
That's me speaking, not your attorney, but.
Well, I'm the minister of the thirteenth, I said I was for it, so, there's my decision.
You wanna put a motion on the table, you can start with that, and then you can discuss and vote on it if you want.
I'll make, I'll make the motion that the board approve the release of up to twenty-six thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars of school impact fees for preliminary work, architectural and engineering services for school expansion plans.
I'll, I'll second that.
Is that written somewhere?
Yeah. You'll get it. All right, uh, we have a motion and a second discussion. John, you for it? Tyler, what do you think?
Yeah? This is the, and whatever they do with this engineering, or whatever they get drawings, they're gonna be good for a while, right? So they won't have to come back and say, we need to get something else.
I think their next step will be coming back and saying, we want this much more.
Because they're gonna try to get money too, though, right?
They're looking for a grant, weren't they?
A grant, or a loan.
I think, I think they would tell you that this is, this is in order to go apply for state building aid, this is what their immediate need for this is.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, they have not answered the question, what happens if you don't get state building aid? They've not answered the question, what happens if you don't build the building? But that's what they're, that's what they told you their intention was.
Personally, the way I feel right now is that this has gone on long enough, and that unless we have a very, very strong reason not to, where we believe it's putting us at jeopardy, or putting the town at jeopardy, then, and we're all aligned around that, then I think we should just release the funds.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any standing concerns on it. And, yeah, they are pressed for time, so we need to, we need to give them an answer.
And what are you gonna say?
What are you thinking?
Uh, I'll just, Chris had made two comments that, uh, they haven't gotten back to us, and, yeah.
No, 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 that's, they.
Did I misinterpret what you were saying?
I, I'm not saying that anybody didn't get, um, all I'm doing is raising questions that have come up, I'm not saying anybody.
Okay, so they haven't answered the two questions, and we're just gonna give them money?
What two questions?
So I have, the, the two that you, that you had mentioned, the, uh, what if they don't build it, or what if they, uh, the engineer, what was the other one?
They don't get the grant, either.
Well, the grant.
The answer is, the money's lost. I mean, I, I don't think that we're waiting from them for any.
We, yeah, we have. You, you've not posed any questions, new questions to them since you talked with them, yeah, no.
I mean, the money is there for these purposes, and it, it, there's never a stipulation that there is some kind of return on that expense, right? It just has to be used for a valid purpose, a legally valid purpose, that's what it's there for.
I, I think their plan is that they're going to, they're using this to develop the plan that they need in order to apply for the grant, right? If they don't get the grant, then I believe their intention is to come back and ask the town for the whole of the money. I believe that that's what they said when they came, but, but that is irrelevant to this particular question.
Right, right.
The question on the table is, do we think this is fair use of impact fee money? And impact fees are supposed to be tied to the expansion of facilities due to the growth of the town, that's the question on the table.
And new expenditures, you can't replace old windows with it, you gotta do something brand new, like what they're planning, that's why you could spend it on this.
So their phase two, phase three is irrelevant at this point to us.
You can't get there without going through one.
Right.
Right. And this will demonstrate, you know, good faith on the town's, you know, on Nottingham's behalf, that when they go for the grant money.
I don't, I don't think you get, you, you, you don't get in the, in the scoring and the decision-making process for state building aid, I don't know that, how you come up with your cost to that point have any bearing on the decision of whether or not you get state building aid, I think it's.
Doesn't it like, not like Marston, where we had to show that we were invested in it as part of the.
I, I don't know that that's the case, but they probably assume that you've paid for something to, to get in the door with your, with your estimates. I wouldn't expect bonus points for, you know, I, I don't.
Yeah.
Outside my area, but I, I don't think that's, I think it's more need driven.
This is also gonna give them a good scope of what this actual is gonna cost when you're going to look for it. As they said during the meeting that they had at the school, you know, part of this whole thing was, there's different projects, if you were going for the building with the projects, and you're only doing a five hundred thousand, you're likely not to get part of that grant money than if you were doing like a three million, where you needed more assistance to support the town. So when the state was giving out, is, passing out or loaning, whatever you want to call the money, you know, they're basing it on the size of what the project is and towards the legitimacy of, of the project, which I think we, they feel that we qualify enough to have this proposal to be made up to why we're having this discussion now.
I didn't ask that question very well, so it probably confused the answer, but. Anyways, is there any more questions or discussion on that?
I just, I can't wrap my head around, I mean, the, the whole thing where they're asking us for money, but they just turned back over seven hundred thousand dollars. I mean, the year before that, they turned back, what, a little over three? I mean, I.
You mean, their impact fees they returned back?
No, 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 not the impact fees, but in their budget, they turned back X amount of dollars, um, which, I mean, seven hundred thousand is a lot of money to just be turning back. I'm not opposed to the, uh, 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 the impact fees, but I really think that somebody should be looking at their budget more closely if they're turning back that kinda money.
Well, there's a reason for that, it was, and the, the big swing in the, you know, I mean, think to your budget committee days, the, the big variable is special ed.
I get that.
Line items, and all it takes is, is one special ed student to move out of town mid year, and all of a sudden
Yep.
they've got this huge budget surplus, you know?
I totally understand.
We've always kept, which was in the best interest of the town, to keep the select board separate from what the school board does.
Yep.
It is a job, I mean, it's a good question for the budget committee, Ben.
Right, they should be the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Well, you got a motion, you got a first and a second?
Yeah, we have a motion and a second, if there's no more discussion, uh, all, all in favor. All right, it's unanimous.
Do we let the school board know?
Will do, okay.
Uh, just one quick question on, uh, we don't have a line C, but for Mr. Danus, who is here, uh, today, whatever, uh.
Don't say Mr. Danus.
I know, I know. Why change that quickly like that? Whereas Marston, uh, we kinda left it with some of you guys that worked here at the last meeting, that'd be something we'd actually probably look, uh, at once it comes.
Other property USA's breaks?
Right. An address on how we were, if he's still interested, or if he's not at that time. His big, uh, question towards us is why we're waiting, uh, and not taking the money. That's another question for a time. I just wanna make sure we put that, since that time's coming up, that we do keep that large parcel, large money in our, if we're not gonna be going solar, if we're not, if that's out, or whatever.
FYI, I've got a Realtor and then somebody interested, somebody's got some interest in it, I have a meeting with them on Wednesday, um, I get these tire kicker.
Yep.
Yeah. All the time, and I, I entertain them and tell them where you are on it, and tell them what I know about the property.
Well, do it all fairness, so we can make a decision off somebody else if he.
You've, you've got a process in front of you to make a decision on this, yeah, um, this is more, uh, educate the person on where we are, and, and I would coach, and I have done this multiple times, and it hasn't turned into much, I coached them to write something to you to say, this is what I would like to do, and, you know, to try and get your attention about it, um, and that doesn't often turn into much, so.
I mean, I mean, I would imagine, I mean, some Realtors know the story of that property, and as it's getting closer and closer to outright ours, I mean, that's when I believe that due diligence will say, hey, you know what, I mean, the highest bidder, I mean, someone, someone's gonna want that property, I think. I really do.
Would it be also still, like, and I just, this is again, a snoken thought, I haven't really discussed with anybody here, with any of you guys yet, but the, the cell tower was part of his purchase of that land. So it was three parcels that he wanted to purchase for the four hundred, right?
Uh, yeah, I think it was.
One was part of the cell tower.
I think, yeah, I think so.
The cell tower makes the town money every year.
Correct.
Yep.
So I don't see us, again, for future, again, we can talk about this later on, but since that is a separate parcel, and it was three parcels, throwing that into the punch.
We aren't talking about that anyway.
You, you can, you can, you can retain that, or you can include it in the sale and expect to make a heck of a lot more on the sale because of it. Um, that's, you, you will face that choice someday, presumably, um, and.
Maybe this year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, well, that's all we had for regular business. Anything else anybody wants to add, throw in? If not, I will take a motion to enter non-public under L and E.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, go into non-public per RSA ninety-one dash A, L and E. John Moore, yes?
I need, we need a second. There you go. All right, roll call, vote.
John Moore, yes.
Tyler Eaton, yes.
Ben Bartlett, yes.
Tony Gumas, yes?
Tony Danus, yes.
All right, we'll be closing when we're done, so, uh, have a good night, everybody.